...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, those board members, Don Fisher and Ruth Blume, can you hear me all right? Is anybody hearing anything? Don or Ruth?
We can hear okay.
Oh, okay. And Ruth? Can you verify that you've posted the meeting notice outside your location?
This is for you.
Yes, okay. Don, have you posted the notice for the meeting out at your location?
Yes, we have.
And Ruth, you as well?
I have, and I have a public member here, the president of the Califor-- no. Liaison from the California PTA.
Okay, all right, welcome. And Jack O'Connell?
Yes, Jack O'Connell, greetings from Fresno, and I've invited here the Kern and Unified School District Superintendent Roger Halberg is sitting with me.
Oh, fantastic. Well, welcome from Kermit.
Thank you, and we're all posted.
Okay, thank you very much. And any members of the public there? Okay, all right. Here in our boardroom, we do have many members of the public present, for those of you at remote locations. I'm going to be using roll call for attendance purposes on this, just because we do have members at the remotes. Ruth Green here, Lee Johnson, Alan Burson, Joe Nunez, John Fisher, Ken Noonan, Ruth Blume, Yvonne Chan is absent, Bonnie Reese, Jonathan Williams is coming but late, and Ricky Gill.
Here.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Madam President, I'm not sure whether Mr. Fisher reported whether there are any members of the public at his location.
No, there aren't.
Okay, thank you, Karen. All right, very well. We are now on-- oh, also, two minutes per public speaker, and we are on to item one, and that is NCLB. Okay, we're trying to get that flexibility we so desire. And we're on a very short timeline here, just for a little history. May 10th, and for a few days after, information was released from the United States Department of Ed announcing proposed flexibility for NCLB. The Federal Department of Education has given us a June 1st timeline, which is why we are meeting here today. So, we'd like to take advantage of the flexibility, we need to ask them for that. If the board votes affirmatively on this letter before that you've been sent, that's been sent to you, the draft letter, then we will ask, we'll have to send additional information by June 15th. So that's our timeline there. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm Diane Levin, I'm the administrator of the NCLB Implementation Office here in the department. Good morning. Happy post Memorial Day. Just to kind of just recap, as you all recall, on April 7th, Margaret Spelling issued some preliminary flexibility in her announcement at Mount Vernon, and promised that she would do a follow-up, and she did on May the 10th, announcing specific flexibility for students with disabilities. So, as Ruth mentioned, we've got two levels, two echelons really of response. The first is essentially, you have Attachment A, a draft of a June 1st letter, which essentially is a letter of intent. It articulates that the state of California wishes to take advantage of this opportunity for additional flexibility, and it requires us to do three things. The first is, we have to include in the June 1st letter a clear explanation of the desired flexibility and the specific elements of the state's accountability plan that would be affected by the change. Part two is a justification for that flexibility, and how it will result in more meaningful accountability and increased student achievement. And the third thing is the date by which the state needs approval from the department in order to make timely adequate yearly progress determinations. The June 1st letter itself is divided really, the demarcation is really in two parts. The first part really focuses on the additional flexibility for students with disabilities, but it includes two additional pieces at the end. The feds have alluded to additional announcements of flexibility for states using growth models for accountability, as well as additional flexibility for English-language learners. We have included those two components at the very end of this letter, only to articulate to the feds that if and when they do come out with specificity for those two components, we intend to take advantage of that. So we're putting them on notice of our intent. So today, what we're going to talk about is, the state has decided that we would qualify for what the feds announced on May the 10th as transition option number one. Eligible states without modified achievement standards may choose this option. Option one applies only to schools and districts that did not make AYP based solely on the students with disabilities subgroup scores. This option allows a state to make a mathematical adjustment to the proficiency rate in order to provide additional credit to schools or districts that miss the AYP target solely based on the achievement of students with disabilities. I'm going to ask Bill Padilla to come up and talk about the calculation for that, and some of the impact projections for California.
Bill Padilla, Policy and Evaluation Division. I wanted to go through some of the numbers so that you have a good sense of what we're after here. I want to stress that this is a form of flexibility, as Diane said, that only applies in the case that the district misses AYP for the special ed subgroup only. If they miss it in another group, then this does not apply. So that's a very important point. The second important point about this is that it's interim flexibility only if the state agrees to develop a new test for the 20 percent of the special ed students we're talking about. Now, Deb Segman's going to talk more about the test development, but I wanted to clarify those two important precursors of this. Now, it's probably easiest to understand this by thinking that 10 percent of the special ed population takes the existing alternative test, which we call Kappa now. Now, that equates to 1 percent of the total school population. So 1 percent of the total school population is 10 percent of the special ed population. That has to do with Kappa. We all know, and Kappa's been underway for a few years now. This does not apply to that 1 percent. There's a cap on those students that get proficient. Only 1 percent of students statewide can score above proficient. If more than 1 percent does, then we reallocate a below proficient score in those cases where that's true. Now, this additional 2 percent does not refer to Kappa. It's an additional 2 percent of the statewide population, which is equivalent to 20 percent of the special ed population. So, the first 10 percent of the special ed population takes Kappa. This refers to the next 20 percent of students with disabilities, who will be eligible to take this new test based on modified achievement standards. The test isn't developed yet, so in the interim, they're allowing the states to use flexibility. Now, what the flexibility really means is that they are going to assume, for purposes of this, that where a school or district fails the AMO strictly on the students with disabilities, they are going to assume that if we had given this new test, that all the students would have scored proficient or above. Now, that equates to those 20 percent scoring proficient or above, so in effect, we would add 20 percent to the AMO for that particular school or district. It works out like this. Suppose the target this year is about, it is, about 26.5, and if the AMO at a certain district or school was 15, and you only failed on that AMO, so you didn't make 26, we would add 20 to that 15, and you would get 35. 35 is great, and 26.5, so the school or district would then make that AMO. So that's exactly what we're talking about. We're talking about assigning an additional 20 percent proficient or above if the school or district fails only the AMO. So now, what is the impact of this? Well, we all know that when we did District PI, there were substantial number of districts that failed only their AMO for students with disabilities. As a matter of fact, 63 districts, once we've gotten all the appeals, 63 districts failed only in the AMO. Now, if we apply that rule to those 63 districts, all but five would then pass their AYP. So it's a substantial help with districts. Now, with schools, it's a little bit different story, since the students with disability group is not as significant in schools as it is when you roll everyone up in a district. There are around 300 schools that failed only on the AMO for students with disabilities. Now, of those 300, when you apply the targets for this spring, only about 30 would be helped by this. Now, the reason for that, you'd expect more. The reason for that is that the targets, of course, went up from 12 to 26. So what's happening is that even though they're failing their AMO in students with disabilities, they're failing other subgroups as well. And remember, this assignment of this extra 20 points only occurs when you fail on the students with disabilities AMO. So the impact at the school level is going to be a lot less. And of course, over time, at the district level, when we ratchet up the targets, it won't help as much either. Now, when the test comes online in 2007, then the scores that those students get will be their natural scores. We would not then actually give this additional assignment. So, that essentially is the algorithm they're talking about, and how we would apply it. If there are no questions, I'll turn over Deb, who can then talk about the test. Question?
Bill, just in, of the 63, all but five would have made it.
No, it's the other way around. Five would not.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Five would not make it the other way.
No, no, I underst-- yeah, okay. What was the final number we ended up with, about 140-something districts?
Yeah, around 140.
That's what the numbers, we should be comparing, the 63 or the 58, too. And it doesn't work, I understand, retroactively, this is if it had been done, but I don't want to complicate this more.
Bill, it's Ruth Blume.
Ruth, I'm answering a question from Glee right now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The question is, is it retroactive? We know it's not retroactive. So what would happen with these districts in '05 if these projections, and these were just projections, we didn't assume any growth in these, they're just projections of what they did in '04 with the new targets? The answer is that they would get, if they didn't fail any other subgroup, they would get a yes for AYP purposes. They would not exit PI until the following year, they would have to have another yes for AYP purposes. So you have to pass AYP two years in a row in order to get out.
Ruth?
Yes, my question is, Bill, is, at our last meeting, we had a couple of districts who were very upset that they had become districts because they had mainstreamed so many of their students, and yet their students didn't perform well on the test. And I'm wondering, is this the very situation that we're going to correct, hopefully, with this new flexibility?
Well, I think the new flexibility, this will apply for students with disabilities who typically would take the standards test with modifications.
Right.
Or out of a level. So I think that what we're seeing here is that this test would be the more appropriate assessment device for these particular students. So, to the extent that it's more appropriate for them, and that they would have a chance to do better on it, then you certainly might be correct.
And the other question I have, have we talked, I know Jack said he's with a district superintendent now, but have we talked with district superintendents about this new flexibility and their feelings about it?
Well, we have actually gone to the Ed Coalition and sort of pushed this around. There's been a very short time period. It's the sort of thing that is not going to hurt anybody, it's only going to help us in the short run. The real issue of developing the test in the long run is going to take some time, and there'll be lots of time for appropriate discussion on the development of that test. But I really can't see any downside to this, although we may have public comments to the contrary.
Thank you.
On that note, I think you, the department, met very quickly with several groups, like AXA and the Special Education Advisor Commission met, so I think you made the rounds quite quickly, given our short timeline. So that's important to note. Yes?
Bill, the 2 percent of the school population translates into 20 percent of the special needs population.
Correct.
And in effect, we're being given a free ride on those 20 percentage points which get added to the AMO until a new test is developed.
Under specified conditions, only if they fail only the AMO in special ed. We don't do it to everybody.
No, I understand.
Correct.
Understand, and that certainly is a good interim measure. What are we doing, if anything, in terms of assessments, to be sure that during this period of two years, that we're still going to be working with the special needs population, and being sure that we're satisfying the other part of the department's requirement, which is that we're continuing to improve the achievement of all subgroups?
Let me jump in there for just a moment, and that was my question, too, because if you step back and look at the big picture, while we all want the flexibility that we're trying to achieve here, working with the federal government, we do want to improve the student achievement of our special ed population, and I think there are a number of ways to do that. I have talked with Alice Parker's, Alice in the room today?
No, she's ill today, but we have people from special ed who can come up and address that kind of question.
Right, and we had talked about a seminar coming up, and I've yet to talk to Gavin again and Alice about when that would, I was hoping July, but to answer these types of questions, because I think there's real room for growth in this area with better assessments, and IEP work, and instruction.
Actually, I think we already contemplated that for July.
So, we'll explore that further in July then, if that's all right.
Okay, Deb Segman is next.
Thank you, Bill. Good morning, Deb.
Deb Segman, Director of Standards and Assessment. I wanted to talk a little bit about the contents of what would go into the June 15th letter. As you know, we're talking about this, the June 1 letter, that is just simply our letter of intent. And part of that intent, of course, is that we commit to development of this full range of assessments for our students with disabilities. And so, our June 15th really expands on that commitment of what we're going to do. And so I'd like to direct your attention to Attachment 3 in your blue item, and just go through, very briefly, with the elements that we are required to respond to in this June 15th memo. The Department of Ed asks that we address our, this intent to develop this alternate assessment based on modified achievement standards, as well as an assessment based on alternate achievement standards if we've not already done so. Now, we're well on our way to the full range of assessments, because we have our California Alternate Performance Assessment, the Kappa. But we recognize that there's some revisions that may need to be done to that as we go through our peer review and so forth. So we have addressed those in this memo as well. But the first item is that we must document the technical quality of our current assessment. And so, we will be providing to the feds our technical report, which is, has been provided to us by our current contractor, ETS, for the Kappa. The second item is that, if not already done, you need to develop criteria for the students who would be being assessed with that alternate assessment. And we, actually, our special ed division has already provided that, and informs our IEP teams, we have nine points that IEP teams should determine whether or not those students should be accessing the test with the Kappa. Number 12, demonstrate the policies are in place to ensure inclusion of all students in the assessment system. There are a number of statutes that require students in California public schools to access the assessment system, and so those are in place, as well as all of our directions and our coordinator's manual, as well as some routine checking to make sure that all of our students are being assessed. And in fact, we have about 97 percent of our students with disabilities who participate in the assessment, so we are at that, well above that 95 percent requirement. Items 13 through 15, address issues around training in terms of IEP teams and so forth. And I'm going to ask Alan Lloyd Jones, a special ed consultant, to respond, or to give you some information about these items.
Thanks very much, Deb. Good morning, everybody. I'm Alan Lloyd Jones, Special Ed Division. As Deb mentioned, points 13, 14, and 15 really address the state's capacity or demonstrated track history of rolling out assessment training. And so, in particular, 13 addresses trainings for IEP teams, particularly assisting IEP teams in developing goals that are standards-based, and we've done that through our partner Calstat, through the State Improvement Grant. This new year, we've received a little over additional $2 million, and the focus through the SIG II, we refer to it as, is going to be working with site-based teams. There's a number of areas you can see that are addressed there, but in particular, academic outcomes, particularly in the areas of literacy and participation of parents and family members is going to be a key focus. As you know, with the Kappa, the California Ordinary Performance Assessment, we had this, if you like, strategic problem of rolling out a measure fairly quickly with reasonably complex scoring rubrics, so we had to do statewide trainings. And to do that, we used a kind of a high-tech approach. We used the Digital California Network, and we provided web-based trainings initially in the first year, but we also supported that with training material on a DVD, which we distributed, basically blanketed the state with that. And so teachers were able to work through that DVD, it's like an individual training module, and learn how to participate and administer Kappa. Is that a question coming in? Okay, I'll stick on. Okay. This year, item number 14, again, providing training for the field around looking at students with disabilities participating in challenging curriculum. We've actually partnered with Sacramento State University, the CCO organization, and also AXA, to provide a series of trainings with the overall theme, students with disabilities participating in challenging curriculum. Again, we've used the web-based training model, we've web-streamed these trainings, and we've archived those trainings, where teachers can go back and take a look at that whenever they're able. And finally, this point number 15, conducting outreach to parents of students with disabilities, and explaining state testing policies, et cetera. We've actually developed a specific DVD which addresses that issue, where parents are actually given the opportunity to look at what a student report might look like, and we kind of walk through the format of that report, and explain to parents just the purposes of including students even with significant cognitive disabilities in the overall assessment system. And that's actually available, if you'd like to see it, on the CD website. You can take a look at that DVD, it's actually streamable now. So, basically, they're the areas where we've kind of addressed statewide training, both for IEP teams, teachers, special education teachers in particular, but also parents. Any questions?
Just a question. I think it's wonderful that 5,800, almost 6,000 have accessed this free online training. That's pretty amazing. But just in terms of, I mean, is it just access, or actually completing printed-out certificates after the pre- and post-test? I mean, is there an accountability feature that ensures that people are actually going through this, districts?
Well, this is more of an individual learning module that special education teachers would participate in, so they kind of log on, they do the pre-test, which gives them a sense of their knowledge base in the area of writing IEP teams that address, IEPs, and writing goals that address state standards. And then, after the program, they do the post-test, but this isn't reported in any way, this is more an individual learning.
I think it would be helpful to see the State Improvement Grant, SIG II, I think you called it, and see, not at this meeting, but if we can get it, if the board can get it. Because I'm looking for significant improvement in this area, and assessments that'll address the underlying psychological and neurological process problems that special ed kids suffer from, particularly in the area of literacy. So I look forward to substantive change in this area and improvement.
Okay, thank you, yes, that's encouraging. Janet Canning is the consultant who's been working with that, so she perhaps report to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, the feds ask us to indicate how we incorporate the scores of those students who participate in the Kappa into our accountability system, and Bill mentioned this, we include them up to that 1 percent cap as proficient, and then, however, on their individual score reports, they receive the score that they actually received on the test. So, there is a difference in terms of how, what a parent and a student sees on their individual report versus how we count those for accountability. And then finally, they asked that we would be submitting all of our assessments during our peer review process, which of course, we will be doing. We're scheduling that for February of 2006, so Kappa will be a part of that review. And then finally, the additional information that is required is some information regarding what steps will we take to actually bring this test, implement this test. And so, what we have done is provided a timeline of, at least through August of 2006, that shows how we would begin the work with our contractor, Educational Testing Service, our current STAR and Kappa contractor, to begin the process for this exam. There's a lot of upfront work in this exam, as you can imagine. There will be many meetings with stakeholders, board staff, board liaisons, CDE staff, district folks, to make sure that as we link the standards, develop these items that differ in breadth, depth, and complexity, are appropriate to be assessing these students. And so, that timeline is given as an insurance to the feds that we are moving in that direction. The current timeline that has been requested by the feds is that this test be implemented in the spring 2007 session, which is ambitious, I will say. So, any questions?
Board questions?
I have a question, it's Ruth Blume.
Yes.
Deb, I know I think I ask this question all the time, but are, is there any other state that's working or has a similar test to the Kappa that deals with this population in a way that we can collaborate in developing a new test?
Well, we, I think it was last week, it may have been the week before, we actually participated on a call, there were about 40 states on the call, with the department regarding the test for the 2 percent. And there was only one state that actually had a test in place, and that, I believe, was Kansas.
So now, do the other states then, they don't include these students in their overall scores?
No, they would have to include them. I'm not sure how they do it, I know that they don't have a particular test that is based on these modified achievement standards. And so, according to the folks on the call, they were all going to be beginning this process of developing this new exam.
And are you going to work collaboratively?
Yes, the, well, we hope to. It's our understanding that there's some money that's flowing out to some regional technical assistance centers.
Yeah.
And so, we would be, hopefully, you know, looking to them to provide some guidance and assistance.
I guess what I'm referring to is the idea of economy of scale.
Right, right. The one thing is, remember that, you know, each state has its own set of standards, and so an assessment has to be tied to that state standard. So I think there's a lot to be learned from other states in terms of process and so forth. But ultimately, what we will have to come away with is an assessment that is linked to our grade level standards, and is, differs-- to our grade level standards and is, differs in terms of depth and complexity.
The CAPA is also linked to our standards?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ruth, please. The one thing, I guess, I'd like you to just talk about a little bit, if you could, Deb, is you sort of skip by very quickly that it's a very ambitious timeline. If you could describe to the board some of the hurdles that we have in front of us and sort of the process that you go through to develop a whole new test.
Sure. As I said, there will be lots of upfront development work in terms of looking at the standards. These assessments have to be linked to grade level standards. So there will be a lot of work just examining, and remember, this will be grades two through, two through 11. And so we'll be having to make sure that those assessment items are linked to grade level standards. So determining actually how those standards are going to be assessed is a large part of the work. Then there's the item development phase. All of the items will need to be developed, be reviewed by assessment review panels, be reviewed by our statewide pupil assessment review, our SPAR panel, field tested. So in actuality, we have about a year to get this done. And there has been, the states on the, on the call that I referred to earlier, were very concerned about the timeline, as we are. Generally, for this kind of project, you're looking about a two-to-three-year process. So, and we have about a year. So it's very compacted, and I think that it's our understanding that the Department of Ed will be coming back at this time next year and re-examining the timeline. So hopefully, we'll, we'll have some extension on this. We hope to.
Any other questions and comments? I have a couple of questions. And I know, Deb, in your department, we'll be working very hard on this one because it is such a rushed timeline, but we want that flexibility. So how about financing this? How does this work?
Well, there's two phases. We hope to have some money restored that was originally removed in the May revise. It was $650,000 that was focused around appropriateness of AYP reporting. We did not have a plan in place by May 12th. Since this came May 10th, it was difficult to get things together. So we would like that money restored. We believe that there has been some movement in that regard to use that $650,000 to do much of this upfront work in terms of bringing people together, bringing the stakeholders together, linking the grade level standards, looking at how those standards might differ in depth and complexity to make those items. And so that will, I think, be going into conference. So hopefully, that money will be restored, and we can get moving on that beginning in July. Then, of course, that's just a piece of it, because there will be money that we will be asking for through the budget request proposal process to the, probably about $4 million to get this going underway.
And how confident are we of California being eligible for this flexibility?
We're very confident. We believe we meet all the core principles. And so I think, I'll let maybe Diane could speak for everyone, but in terms of the, this piece of it, we're very confident that we meet the core principles.
Okay, good, good news. All right. Comment, questions from any of the board members? Any, okay, so public comment at this time? Two minutes?
We have one speaker listed on the sign-up sheet, Martha Wallace.
Okay. Welcome, Martha.
Good morning. Martha Wallace, California Teachers Association. California Teachers Association supports the CDE's proposal for flexibility to provide additional credit to schools and districts that miss the AYP target solely based on the achievement of students with disabilities. And we wish all of ourselves luck in meeting these timelines. Additionally, we're pleased to hear that the Education Department is ready to work with states on greater flexibility for determining AYP. And in that arena, given California's high standards and definition of proficient, CTA does not recommend that the CDA offer or agree to options, either verbally or in writing, of raising the API index from 800 to 875, or doubling the annual API growth target from 5 to 10% in any context. Increasing the API index to 875 when the majority of our schools are struggling to reach 800 isn't productive and is likely to trigger a necessary immediate failure for many schools. So, CTA supports using the API for determining AYP and supports negotiating NCLB flexibility on these options, including subgroup API and district growth targets, and of course, seeking flexibility regarding students with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jim Woodhead.
Good morning. My name is Jim Woodhead. I'm a liaison for the Advisory Commission on Special Education. We met last Thursday and Friday, and we took some time out of our agenda to discuss this issue, and I would like to make a statement on behalf of the commission. The commission supports California moving ahead with an application to the United States Department of Education for additional flexibility regarding the No Child Left Behind Plan for students with disabilities. In supporting this application, the commission would like to underscore the importance of including students with disabilities in a state accountability system that is meaningful and consistent with the educational needs of students. Further, the commission is enthusiastic about additional flexibility for students to access the core curriculum, demonstrate knowledge of appropriate standards in alternative ways, and inform the educational institutions. Briefly, I would also like to point out that in some instances, there have been unintended consequences in terms of the reporting out by superintendents in local school districts with respect to program improvement identification. And the essence of that is to fix blame on students with disabilities in all too many instances. One such district, a principal took it upon himself to provide the highest-scoring students were given yellow T-shirts with shining stars, imprinted while the average-scoring students wore another color, and the lowest-scoring students wore red T-shirts. I think this is egregious discrimination against students with disabilities, and I think it is indeed unfortunate. It is important that students with disabilities be provided the opportunity to demonstrate what they do know and not necessarily demonstrate what they don't know. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sylvia DeRuevo.
I'm Sylvia DeRuevo with the California Association of Special Education Teachers. I'm very excited, and our board is very much confident that this is a first step to allowing our students with disabilities, those gap kids, to be able to show what they know. Unfortunately, these students have been labeled culprits at some point for bringing schools into program improvement, and that this new flexibility option is something that we hope that you will move forward with to find a way that our students can show what they know. These students all have individualized education plans, which tells us that they need individualized instruction, and they don't quite fit into the standard accountability model, and that a growth model would significantly change how special education students are viewed. At this point, their score is always coming out far below basic, especially if they've used a modification. Doesn't call for any celebration when those scores come back, no matter how hard that student and that teacher have worked that year. And so I think a growth model, an alternate performance assessment, would allow these students, and the work that they have put into making growth, would actually show. And so I just ask that you would move forward with this flexibility, that you would include teachers as stakeholders in looking at what would make a good alternate performance assessment. What are the essential standards that these students need to meet in order to meet the content standards at grade level and ultimately to pass the California High School exit exam? Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Good morning.
Good morning, President Green and board members. My name is Ruslan Alley. I'm the director of the Education Trust West, based in Oakland. We have a memo prepared for you today that will go into much more detail than I'll have time to do this morning. Flexibility is good. Certainly, seeking flexibility to achieve the goals of NCLB is important, but I urge you to be cautious. There's a fine line between seeking flexibility and undermining the very important goals of NCLB. No Child Left Behind represents a very important civil rights agenda, and that is closing the achievement gap. It is perhaps the most important civil rights agenda of our time. We are concerned that doomsday projections and defeatist proposals were served to bolster the chorus, claiming that we cannot meet the goals of NCLB, that all kids cannot reach our rigorous levels of proficiency. The memo that you are receiving goes into detail why API is simply not enough. The targets are moved, the targets are to, the targets move from year to year or have the potential to, as has been discussed this morning. The goal is not proficiency. And more than that, subgroups are not full partners. The API system, in fact, codifies a belief of low expectations. Subgroup performance is measured relative to the school-wide target, and then only 80%. So while I understand that you need to move forward in seeking some kind of flexibility, particularly with special ed kids and perhaps our ELL students, it is very important to remember that the goals of growth can get lost if we focus exclusively on growth. That goal is to ensure that all students reach proficiency. Our API system masks achievement gaps while rewarding marginal improvement. In the memo, we have a few examples showing schools in California that do that. We'd be happy to prepare, to prepare more for you. By and large, I urge you not to follow the course that's large and looming across the nation that pushes you to retreat.
Two minutes.
Keep the goals of NCLB, seek flexibility, but be leaders and help move the Department of Education to do the right thing here. And let's be clear about the messages that we send. Messages like "No Child Left Behind" is really "No Educator Left Standing," are destructive, defeatist, and send messages into the field that why we should even try. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Sherri Skelly Griffith.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sherri Griffith with AXA. We want to commend the staff, not only for notifying the field in such a timely manner, but for putting together a very thoughtful item that will be going to the undersecretary. We did have a conference call last Thursday, and we included districts both large and small, Elk Grove, Los Angeles, Palo Alto, a number of others, and they enthusiastically supported Transition Option 1. I wanted to share with you that Dick Bray from Asperia, who is challenged by the special ed issue, is sending that same message. He was on the call, and I promised I'd share that with you. We do think the next stage is to support the assembly version of the budget, which includes the $650,000 in the Title VI funds, and we hope to join with you on advocating for the additional $4 million estimated out of Title VI, which we think is the appropriate funding source for these types of developments in regards to assessment, and we look forward to working on the alternative assessment criteria with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Martinez.
Good morning.
Good morning. George Martinez with the California Federation of Teachers. Come forward to explain to you that we support this additional flexibility so we can deal with the basic problem with students with disabilities, in that the problem, I think, lies more with the testing than anything else and the delivery of instruction. Ideally, we would have much smaller student-teacher ratios. Furthermore, we support a growth model. However, we have some serious reservation about the 2014 deadline that all students will be proficient, short of closing our borders and doing away with English-language learners. That, too, represents a serious problem in terms of schools making target. Furthermore, CFT does not support the change in of the 5% to 10% for required growth. Furthermore, we do not support the change of what I refer to as a steady state of 800 to 875. One thing that we need to do, as I've expressed before, is we need to invest here in schools because we're investing in our future. We need to send more resources in that direction rather than engage in a continuous acts of shaming and blaming our schools that are doing a tremendous work with very difficult conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no other speakers. At the remote locations, are there any speakers that would like to make public comment there?
Ruthie?
Yes.
There's a speaker at my location here.
Okay, it's time for that speaker.
All right. That should work. Go ahead. Okay, Ruslan Turnbull, California State PTA. Thank you. Is it working?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you for this opportunity to address the board. The California State PTA has been very involved in the progress of the No Child Left Behind throughout California schools and supports the basic premise of the law. We believe and want every child to achieve the highest level of success that is possible for them, and we think that No Child Left Behind has to have some flexibility for assessing our widely diverse students in schools. In exploring flexibility for special education students, PTA recognizes the need for some different accountability measures. However, it is important that they be designed to give the special education students scores appropriate weight and does not make them scapegoats of the district when AYP is calculated. Appropriate assessment and fair inclusion will allow special education pupils to progress forward and not to be unfairly isolated by the accountability measure. Consideration must be given by the Department of Ed and Board of Californian's parental opt-out clause. School districts, schools and districts are penalized by parents exercising their right under the law to exempt their children. Parents exclude their children for a wide variety of reasons, but it is their right in our state to do so. PTA believes that to best serve the children, the assessment must require growth from all areas. It is important that all subgroups in a school improve rather than a small band of students move from basic to proficient. No Child Left Behind flexibility should include higher expectations for each subgroup, not just the school or a district as a whole. It is of great concern that the number of program improvement districts is increasing in California and the limited pool of resources is being spread thinner and thinner. Identifying genuine program improvement schools and districts rather than ones of a few children short of the quota due to parental
Two minutes.
doubts or other glitches will concentrate the money and personnel to help children in schools more in need, then the basic premise of the law will be appropriately applicable. No Child Left Behind has to develop some flexibility to truly change the face of the schools in our country. Our children are not made in the one-size-fits-all model, and public schools are the best avenue to success. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Karen?
Thank you. I think the board should be very happy that the department, especially Deb Sigmund, had very can-do attitude about this, and they've done a great job of getting everything done on time to meet the federal deadlines. But I think we do need to point out to the board that the instructions and the communications from the U.S. Department of Education have some areas where they don't necessarily fit together well, and so we're not totally sure that we know what all the eligibility requirements for this program, for this flexibility are. And so while we're hopeful that California will qualify, it's not a slam dunk as of yet. We just need to know that, everyone to understand that. And then the one thing, it wasn't clear whether or not, everybody, I understood that this proxy, the flexibility that's given on the interim basis where you calculate the proxy is for only one year at this point, and will be hopefully revisited, as I think as Deb Sigmund pointed out, before the test is available.
One year, okay. Diane, do you want any further comment on this?
It sounds like it goes dead.
For those of you who can't see me, this is Diane Levin again. Just to kind of summarize what your task is now, you've been given a lot of information before you. And so what we need for you to consider are really a couple of things. The first is to think about the draft of the June 1st letter and the one that we've included in your item, to see if there are any additions you would like to make to that. And then if we have your permission, we'd like to send that letter of intent to U.S. Department of Education tomorrow. The other thing for your consideration The other thing for your consideration, then, if that is a yes, is to consider the content for the June 15th letter and the plan, the long-term plan and the timeline that Deb has presented to you, so that we can get that off to the feds by June the 15th. In order to give you the information that you need to be able to make that decision, we've included as much as possible of the content of that letter for you today, but we also would ask that you empower your board NCLB liaisons to work with us in any additional editing or content revisions to that June 15th letter.
Right. Thank you very much. All right, so any further comment from the board of questions before I go on? Okay. Please.
I just, this is not specifically have to do this, but it has a little bit to do with Jack's comments and some of the testimony about changes in the API that people are concerned about or advocating for, whatever. I'd just sort of like to say that I think the most important thing about NCLB and that the API is weakest on is the achievement gaps and that we really focus on that. I mean, the moving from 800 to 875, the doubling the growth, those are things we can talk about, but to me, the most important feature is making sure that the achievement gaps, because the API does mask it to some extent, and I think we're all concerned about that. I also think it'd go a long way to resolving any palms the feds have about our API system.
Thank you, Glee. All right. Yes, please, Ken.
I'd like to respond and suggest to you that what Glee has said is really important to me as well. I think it reflects, in some ways, Ms. Ali's comments from the Trust West, that we not backslide, that we not allow any kind of incursion into this area. This law, NCLB, is probably the best thing that has happened for poor and minority children that I have seen in my 30 years in the profession. As a minority myself, having worked with many children in this area, it is the one thing that I see as a hope for these children to move forward and be brought up. We are paying much more attention to these children now than we ever have before. That's a bit of a general comment. I agree with the move forward on this. I think it can be helpful, but we must exercise care and caution as we go forward. This is for one year, I understand.
Correct.
And so I think that gives us time to analyze what the real meaning of it is. So I appreciate that, and I will support that we do this.
Thank you. And I alluded to that earlier with my comments on special ed, that let's look at the bigger picture. So I agree very much so with the subgroups. Alan, please.
As I understand it, the attachments, one and two, will go with the letter to Washington. And attachment three is the substance, but not the actual draft of the letter, and I'm comfortable with the procedure that's suggested. I think responding and agreeing with Ken, but pointing out that here's the danger that we face, and I think this, and also Glee's comment, is that we're walking on a line in which everyone is committed to narrowing and then closing the achievement gap. But when an accountability system gets so brittle that it sets goals that nobody believes in, you lose legitimacy, and we've got to find that balance. I think the API and the growth model is a big step and has done a lot of what you were suggesting. I think the challenge is going to be to find a way to not lose that edge, but also not break the notion because it leaves people unbelieving. So I'm agreeing, but indicating that I think that's the work that the board has got to find, is a way to synthesize status and growth in a way that doesn't label half of our schools or two-thirds of our schools as failing, because what we don't have then is the capacity to meaningfully intervene, either at the teacher level or at the state level. So I just, I stand next to you on the goal. I think we're going to need some flexibility to get there over time. I agree with that. Thank you.
I have a question concerning the, let's see, page four or five, we're throwing them off, three sound state education policies.
Attach, oh, so attachment three.
Attachment one.
Oh.
We are prepared, right, the letter, we are prepared to submit to the ED by June 15, 2005, additional information and assurances concerning our sound state educational policies. I'm just wondering what that is, because if we've got a June 15th deadline, anything that gives the Department of Ed a chance to kind of delay this, I'm just wondering what the plan is on that. Deb?
It's attachment three. All of the things that we're asked to do are the things that are highlighted in attachment three. So the items 10 through 17, and then the additional information.
So if that's going with the letter?
It's not going with the letter. It's just the contents of the June 15th letter that we would provide to you so that we can further our work and you can let the liaisons to fully finalize it.
Unless we want to have a meeting every few weeks, we can just come on back and we can get together. No. Is that, explain it? Yeah. So the department's working very hard trying to give us as much information as possible, given that we're meeting at this time. Deb?
Just to clarify too, Ruthie, that we only send the June 15 letter once we are determined to be eligible based on the data that they already have in our annual performance report and the additional information we supply with our June 1st letter. Then if the U.S. Department of Education determines we're eligible, then we will send the June 15 letter at that point in time.
Thank you for that clarification. So we have a few hurdles, in other words, before this is done. All right.
And is every state sending such a letter?
I do.
As far, 40 states or what?
Many states.
Yeah.
Okay. So I need a motion that would read as follows. The board approved the June 1st letter to Ray Simon requesting Option One flexibility for California and expressing interest in continuing the discussion about any flexibility that may arise related to California's growth model and/or English-language learners, and further approve the draft, June 15th, 2005, letter to Ray Simon, supporting the Option One flexibility request, with any technical revisions being approved by the board's federal liaisons prior to the transmittal to the U.S. Department of Education. Glee, second. Ricky, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, sorry, I'm making a roll call. Excuse me.
Let me take a vote. Aye.
Okay, let me go down the list. I vote affirmatively. Glee Johnson?
Aye.
Alan Burson?
Aye.
Joe Nunez?
Aye.
Don Fisher?
Aye.
Ken Noonan?
Aye.
Ruth Blum?
Aye.
Bonnie Reese?
Aye.
Jonathan Williams?
Aye.
Ricky Gill?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. Public comment. Any public speakers that would like to speak on anything not in the agenda today?
We have three speakers listed. The first is Quentin Christian.
I think it's still morning. I can't see from the clock from my position. My name is Quentin Christian. I'm the Executive Director of the Physical Education, Health, Recreation and Dance Association in California. Your Executive Director, Catherine Barquette, tells me that she has received quite a few messages this week that you will be getting in a nice packet that's coming to you, and I want to talk with you a little bit about that, because I've been receiving telephone calls and messages myself. I'm here to talk with you primarily about the coordinated compliance review process in physical education, a decision that you made last, the last meeting that you held to adopt that coordinated compliance review after you reduced it by five of the eight items that were on that list. Our people in physical education are very concerned about that, many in disbelief, and I've had several phone calls and telephone calls, and I hope those will be read this next week by you. Our people are very, they're very interested in being accountable for the work that they do. Teachers in general, I think, are interested in being accountable. And Mr. Gill here even questioned one of the speakers earlier about his accountability procedures. We think that the coordinated compliance review process is an accountability measure. These things of compliance relate to law, both federal law and state law that have been passed, that our schools are supposedly required to be doing in the area of physical education. And we are concerned that, we thought there was a process in place where we were moving progressively to the point of eight of these things now being evaluated in the schools to say, yes, you're following the law, or no, you're not following the law, at least to bring it to the attention of the school and of the community and so forth, that the schools were or were not meeting the requirements of the law. In April, an information memorandum that you received about the revision of the CCR instrument made the statement clear, and I quote, "The content of the current instrument remains relatively intact as its components are delivered directly from state and federal law. Nothing required by law will be eliminated or passed over in this review process." And yet, at your last meeting, you chose to eliminate five of those items that were listed there. You, for example...
Excuse me, you're over the time. Could you just wrap up your comments now? Thank you.
Two things.
Okay, great.
One, we would like, we would like for you to consider revising that decision or reviewing that decision that you made, and secondly, we would like for you to consider putting this as an agenda item for your July meeting so that it can be discussed more thoroughly by some of our people that would be here to discuss that, too.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Freddie Thompson Esters.
Good morning. My name is Freddie Thompson Esters. I'm a physical education teacher, dance educator from Hollywood High School, Los Angeles Unified. Tomorrow, I will take the gavel as the president of the California Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation and Dance. As a leader in the professional community, I have listened for many years as teachers have expressed frustration with their inability to teach students effectively because their school districts disregard for state and federal laws related to physical education. As a high school teacher, I have experienced the physical education CCRs for the first time and was overjoyed that we would be part of the process starting September 2004. I welcome the CCRs as a review process to strengthen our physical education program in the state. Here are just a few of the things our district did at the onset of the CCRs. One, we developed a process to ensure that all students participate in state-mandated fitness grants. We developed tools to assist principals in providing leadership for physical education programs. We developed teacher resource guides. In fact, we're still in the process of aligning our curriculum with the standards as well as our framework. Do you remember the discussion you had in January this year when you adopted the physical education model content standards? Several of you spoke of the importance of this new document, with the hope that our schools will embrace the important work of physical education. The content standards provide a very nice model for schools to use. I urge you to reconsider your vote taken on May 11th and restore fiscal education CCR review so that we can indeed be healthy, have healthy kids, because California takes the lead.
Thank you very much. And I think, final speaker.
The last speaker listed is Pat Vicroy.
I'm sure it's afternoon by now. Yes, good afternoon. I'm Pat Vicroy. I teach elementary physical education for Gilroy Unified School District, and I am here also to speak of the power of the coordinated compliance review. For 25 years that I've been professionally involved in teaching physical education, nothing has impacted our district to the extent of this last review that we had several months ago. Our district, many years ago, started a system of planned abandonment where they took any type of subject or activity that did not increase test scores of reading, math, or language arts, or writing, and they would systematically abandon those activities. Physical education was one of those activities. Teachers are directed not to take their students out for physical education, and until this compliance review team arrived in Gilroy, that's exactly what was happening. Very few teachers would take them out. But upon arrival, you saw immediately schools, physical education teachers have met on two different occasions to articulate. We have set up 10 days of curriculum review and development for this summer. There's been an enormous focus on developing quality physical education, and it's only because of this enforcement process. And I know time is running out, but I would like to close by saying, we can make all the laws in the world, and if there's no enforcement component, then it's not worth having. We can have, we can triple the amount of fines for driving through a construction zone, but if there's nobody to enforce and penalize the people for doing that,
Two minutes.
then it makes no sense at all to have the law. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for your comments. Diane, will you come up? Gavin tells me that you can help us understand this issue.
Diane Levin, NCLB Implementation and Coordination Office. The coordination refers to the fact that CCR redesign policy also resides in my office. And as you know, we presented before the board the collection of CCR instruments that had been retooled, reconfigured, if you will, to include those items that are statutorily required by law. So many of the instruments, not all of them, but many of the instruments were pared down in terms of some extraneous things that were not grounded in statute or that were changed because the law had changed. I've asked Bill Vacy to come talk to you specifically about the issues raised for the PE instrument. I just want to, just as a preface, tell you that all of the instruments were not reconfigured in a vacuum. We worked with program staff in the department, we vetted them with interest groups in the field to kind of take a look at them and then presented them to the board. Clarification, the board did not adopt the instruments. The board role in the CCR instruments is to review them to ensure that they are aligned with board policy. So in that reconfiguration process, not only did staff and program folks and folks from outside the department meet and take a look at these, but we vetted them with our own legal office as well as legal representatives for the board. So it went through the process. Anyway, to address specifically the PE issues, I've asked Bill Vacy to come.
Madam President?
Yes, this is...
I'd just like to remind the board, this item has not been noticed,
Right.
and you could take no action, and the discussion is a bit unusual.
Right, I think so. So I just wanted a clarification, and I think it might be appropriate to have an information memo sent out to the board on this, rather than further this discussion. I just wanted to clarify a little bit on the process in response to the public comment. Okay? Thank you. But thank you, Bill. We'd love to hear from you, just not now. All right. Thanks very much, Karen. Okay, that concludes the open session, and at this time, the speakers at the, excuse me, not speakers, the members at the remote locations, if you can hold on for a minute. We are now going to close session, so I'll ask that the room be cleared, and we go forward.
Executive Director resignation and release agreement in concept, giving authority to board members Ruth Green and Alan Burson to work out the final agreement in keeping with the components of the proposed executive director agreement. Additionally, the board took action to assign board members Ruth Green, Glee Johnson, Alan Burson, and Joe Nunez to a search committee for the purposes of seeking, reviewing, and recommending candidates for the position of executive director, chief counsel, and deputy director. adjourned.[1739.69]